All right, welcome everyone to our November working session Saturday. We were having a like detailed discussion before this. So let's get to it. All business home rule update. Yeah, so I have the road report on this, just pulled some data from last night's elections. There were a couple municipalities that had this on the ballot. So it might be interesting for folks to know, so Duquesne had this. Duquesne is starting the process, so they have a ballot to do a study government commission. If you had a county site, if you scroll all the way to bottom, it has a section for studies and just ballot initiative. But Duquesne had this. It was in the four one margin, yes, so yes, was twelve seventy seven, no, it was three sixty one. They have five commissioners on there, but of four, four names on a ballot, but like one write in for like hundred, a hundred names. So they didn't go to the seven, they just did five people. So I thought it was interesting, so they're starting the process. So Jefferson Hills, I don't very much Jefferson Hills or where, I don't even know where that is. It's like you said here. Okay, so it's like south, okay, so that nearly, yeah, I bet you not, I don't think it passed, but that one. It's up by one hundred twenty four votes, so thirty five thirteen, A thirty three, I guess. That one, they have like thirteen, now they have twelve people on the ballot. And then they had a write in that got like eight votes or something like that, which is pretty interesting. I don't know what they're doing there, but that's them. South Park and West Year had put it on their ballot. Might have been questioned, so they're gonna pass. And then Wilkinsboro, the one that actually had started the process two years ago. There's past, yes, thirty eight sixty eight, and then no, it's twenty eight sixteen. So thousand fifty two spread there.
Is that their charter, their commission?
This is like the actual, like next step after the study.
Okay, so that's them.
Yeah, they're going home rule effective with this. I don't know what the date is, but I didn't feel like it passed. I do know one thing for Wilkinsburg, the mayor, Wilkinsburg, the mayor is a full time position now. That was one thing that they recommended.
On a job?
That was just something that I just saw on their site, just some keeping, but that's happening in Wilkinsburg. It sounds like a, when originally you still like work out that, but that's all I know about.
My goal starts with sixty eight percent.
Like a certain, oh, I thought they were already doing it.
No, they, they adopt, they've done the commission seventy percent, two years ago, it's sixty eight percent. So now their home rule charter.
Yeah, and if I were a public, our neighbors, Marshall, Brad, Bradford, Bravert Woods, and Council and Pines. Okay, so really only, I am, but this is the only one in like this vicinity that's like kind of not. Okay, so that's all I have on home rule.
Can we reach out to those communities then to ask the, or they?
Yeah, so I wanted to talk to Wilkinsburg, just get their thoughts on their reasoning because their task base is a little bit different. They have some development. They have some train station restoration project they were going on when they're, it's not a train station, it's actually in the hall. So kind of want to, the mayor actually, you know, look at the website, look at the people that are on it, so just wait for them to get back to me. I haven't talked to Duquesne, give me just their thoughts on it, or if anybody has, but they're starting the process. I want to get an idea, like their, what they call is.
I, I think to Tom's point, we need to figure out how much it's gonna cost him to get from point A to point B to figure out what that's all about.
Yeah, pretty good to know if they used anyone. I can't imagine that they use this. Yeah, so yeah, I'm curious like how they, who's their project manager, do they self manage, what are their goals? But they might have like a template for the things.
Well, I think Duquesne and Jefferson Hills are just kicking it off.
Just kicking it off, yeah.
West, West year the same, or they're just kicking it off?
West year has some ballot, I think it's a ballot initiative, because I didn't find like names on there.
I think it might have been amendment.
Yeah, both of them have like overlong, overwhelming like numbers. I don't, because I didn't see any names, so I don't think they're doing like people listing on there. It was the other ones that did. Yeah.
So to kick it off, we need to have, should we, should we do, should we form a commission and then these are the commissioners?
Yeah.
Should we elect these commissioners?
Yeah, it looks like it's a standard question, which is literally a lot of government study and ballot initiatives. So whatever that standard language is, and then the people, and then if you don't have people, you can just do a bunch of writers, which is what this became for.
Right, because sometimes people don't want to knock doors and have signatures on petitions. The problem is that for educational purposes, everybody at the table knows this, that's run. You need to talk to people in person, you can't just show up with a valid initiative and think that they're in what you're talking about.
Yeah, these are smaller to me, these are than a.
Duquesne's are very smart than you, I think what Jefferson Hills, it's bigger, it's definitely bigger than you.
Yeah, just look at the boat club, Jefferson Hill is very big, it's on same scale as like Wilkinsburg, just looking at those. I started, that's probably the thirteen people we're trying to like for this, that was interesting.
But do we have plan to keep this off next year? Do we need to make a plan or?
We can't even get there until everybody at the table agrees this is something to do. That's never getting happen.
Yeah, so we should hear from, I can, I can reach out between now and the next meeting and see if they can come in December and just talk with the meeting side here. How do you want to approach this?
For the summer work session.
Oh, never mind, yeah, never mind, yeah, so maybe January?
Just as a, okay, yeah. Usually that's where we do the news or the board.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, forgot about that.
If you weren't just a phone call to those two, just to, just even. Basically, two or three questions, tell us why you're doing it, and how you know.
I can get a summary right back to the council with that's okay, and just say, I reached out to them, here's my summary of what they said. They confirmed it to them, that we would have to like schedule or whatever, they may, they may not be available, I know some may be on a Wednesday night, so.
I mean, really, the thing we care about is, is generally how they get there, how much money did it cost them, right? And what resources they threw out, resources made like existing council people or whatever.
Yeah, I didn't check the names, they may not, maybe they're council people, I think they're.
I had a few people asking me yesterday about downsides and honestly, I was personally struggling to come up with any, but that's something that we should think about. Other than, and I answered for myself, I wasn't speaking, I was clear about that. To me, the downside would be number one, just the unknown, right? We don't know exactly how is it gonna come out in the end, and that the commission is the one in charge of the form of government. So we have to be really smart about who is on the commission. But moving forward, I'm sure that's a question that we're gonna get if we move forward with this in any, in any fashion. So I'd like to hear, if you have kind of a couple of minutes, like does anybody have any, the answer to that question, someone says, well, what are the downsides?
Well, at least the newsletter went out yesterday that you know about, talked about how they were concerned about reorganizing entire government once they got into this and how that would be bad since it's working fine, right?
Well, and I can understand a fear of thinking things are gonna be totally different, and when people asked me that question yesterday, I said. In my experience and in our discussions in council, we have all said, we want to keep things as they are. We want to keep the form of government, we want it to function, everything essentially the same.
Because you only fix something if it's broken and this government's been running fine. The issue that we have with the home rule charter, what we're looking to fix is the finance part.
Absolutely, but I'm just saying, like, you guys have, when people ask us questions about this, which they should and will.
How do you, how do you keep the, the central people, they may be, how do you keep them on track?
You're gonna, you're gonna have to, it has to be guides, and I'm, I'm pretty sure there's gonna be, there's council people that jump.
Yeah, so it'll be self managed, but you will have to just come up with a project plan, I imagine, and just say, these are the things, these are the goals. And meet regularly, does not be every week, it could be monthly, we. Three times in two months.
Those seven people have a responsibility to come back to council with. What I was thinking about.
But they have to resent their findings, sorry, or their recommendation, they present their recommendations at the end. At the end, yeah, but they can get, I mean, we can ask for status updates, I mean, actually, if anybody's, if any council members are on that, I'd imagine that that counts.
There you go, you could be on the commission.
But.
Yeah, any of us can be on the commission.
Yes, I'd imagine that the person would give us regular updates, and also it looks like five, max. That means, that means it's not in a way of five.
I mean, they technically do vacancies, so like. But they're still running. Looking at it, seven, nine, or eleven.
They're running with two vacancies, they're just doing their.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
I want to discount the, the realness, for lack of a better word, of the unknown, right? That is the downside from where we are now, but I didn't know if there were any other tangible downsides that we.
I mean, cost, but we're gonna try to get what that is, that's.
Yeah, we can nail that down pretty close, I would think.
I just think intuitively that if, if boroughs and concepts and they're trying to get out of a hole, they're not gonna spend themselves further in the hole by doing this.
Well, you would think that, but that's not always how it works.
I said intuitively, I don't know if that's the case or not, yeah, so, but. I mean, I can't imagine us sitting down and saying, this is a really great project, we're spending a hundred thousand dollars to figure out whether we need a home rule charter, can't see us doing that.
No, but, but people don't know that, you know, and that seems very strange and foreign and like a big change, so. I think we need to kind of be on the same page and have answers to these questions.
And I think the other thing about the form of government is, yeah, there's, they can study things to figure out, how does this work? Is this working right, is this working wrong?
Which is where some of that other municipalities.
Right.
We've already come up with a couple of things that it's beneficial, we obviously, this stormwater authorities, the possibility, the transfer tax.
Real estate transfer.
Yeah, what you and I talked about.
Yeah.
Weeks ago after the meeting, which, you know, something we can make a hire.
Yeah.
That feels less painful.
I think if we want to do it, we've come up with, with all the, all of the reasons that it's gonna, all the benefits.
Yeah, absolutely.
Then you talk to the residents, you say, yeah, this is why we want to do this, we're not gonna change the form of government, and we hope we can accomplish A, B, C, D, and E.
Right.
To reduce tax burden on, on individuals.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't have to be overly complicated, but we need, we need four or five bullet points on what that man, it's gonna be a lot of cost, it's gonna be a cost. It's gonna take time and it's gonna take effort.
Yeah.
So for the, for the cost, time, and effort, here's the benefits.
I would really like council people, if, if there's no prohibition, that they, they jump in, at least a few of them, and get on the commission, if that's where we go. Because I think, especially if we can do, what I would really love is a, is a bipartisan, so everybody, folks from, from public side, don't just sit there and work on it together. So to communicate, it's a, it's, it's a whole cooperative effort. And there isn't this concern that the whole government's gonna get overturned and toppled, which is the un, the unknown.
Right, I agree.
So, yeah.
I'd like to recommend we try to, try to round that up by January, maybe we try to talk, contact Duquesne and Jefferson Hills before the end of the year, make a phone call, just. Feel around to find out why they both just did it this year.
Yeah.
And then we could look, start dropping something to the volunteers, and if we make a decision, so making this up in January, and we decided we want to do it, primary is probably May next year, because we bought it.
Right.
A present every year.
So there's time to work on it, talk to the community, educate them, maybe you have a couple of, of sessions, or it's information sessions with your bullet points, and they can come and ask questions.
Yeah, yeah, like informational thing is actually good talk, like bullet points, so like everyone probably got this, this funny. Fancy, it has a little. But it, it, it explains very simply why they're doing something, so.
Actually, something like that started a very rough draft, but I can add some more stuff in and send it around, you guys can do it.
Yeah, anything to make, anything to make it simpler to explain. People to be comfortable to them.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, that makes sense.
If we can hit the gun running.
That's, that's not a bad primary.
It is, and then, then you, you know, what you can do is, you know, petitions kind of circulate along with the other petitions.
That's right, yeah.
Council school board and other locations.
Yeah, yeah.
It might all work out.
I think it might, yeah.
So if we want to start next year, what would be the timeline, just like you wait?
Try to get all the plan.
Together by January, so we have a package, and then they could, we could, if we made the decision in January or even early February, we could then do it in maximum sponsor.
Twelve weeks, so. Twelve Tuesdays before, that.
What's the write, what's the write in numbers, is there a special writing?
A hundred and seventy.
No, no, that's if you're getting signatures, but if you just go to the poll and have them write.
My understanding, you'd be like for a write in, like you can't just get one, like you need the equivalent of what you would to get on, so the rural councilman, right? And I would think, you know, a hundred and sixty, what, we'll have to recalculate again, well, no, because it's based on the governors, the last governor's election, so it'll still be on the one sixty.
Despite the personnel like.
So if it got circulated, like you said, you could, you could, you could just educate them, we're gonna go, we're gonna, you know, this will be on here, and you can write in the names of these commissioners. Here's the slated commissioners.
Okay, I, I can talk to Duquesne, I'll reach out to them this week, and also Wilkinsburg, ask like how's it going, like how we passed it. It just kind of gets some thoughts and we'll be right back.
What about Jefferson Hills, you want me to put something in the general?
Yeah, go for it, and it's, I mean, I'm curious, like.
I don't know them, but I.
Yeah.
I don't know anybody.
Well, once you say you're council person, they're, they're after talking to you, is what, is what we find.
Yeah. I'll, I'll reach out to Duquesne, that's, and then you'll do Jefferson Hills.
I do have like my thought is at the end, that we may not be able to find the answer to all the questions by next February, but I believe that today, right now. Because later, we have the commission, right, we have like seven member or like nine or eleven, and who can help, you know, find the answers to some questions, so. And even we, we will not be able to get the, you know, answers for all the questions, we still are planning to the goal, you know, move forward.
You should have a general idea, yeah, I mean, when we finalize, when we, um, like we were talking about finalizing this, you should have an understanding of like four or five bullet points of why we're doing this. Like, that's what I was thinking of this far stuff.
Right, we, we need to know, but then anybody who want to encourage the servant is gonna ask you the right questions.
What am I gonna be doing, why am I doing?
On the website too, I'm afraid.
We've already did some stuff on the website, maybe even more, more benefits, if we can identify more benefits, the more we have, the more helpful it will be.
Is it possible to have a visual, this is where we are now, like financially, and this is where we could be if, if we did the home return, something really concrete.
If you had, if you had that graph, one of them, we could have offset this, this, and this with, with the stormwater fee, with, with the additional.
Right.
I don't know, I'm, I'm making things up.
Right, we're spitballing now, but maybe this will not be one way to look at it.
Then taxes, taxes don't have to, I think, go flat, certainly didn't go the same, you mean the same. I don't, always a way to, to identify and sell something.
And I don't know if it's selling so much as, like, what you've been studying for, we're just get all the information, let's make sure that they understand why we're doing what we're doing, and get them behind it, you know, on board. Instead of just the scary unknown and slurs.
Okay, so, so Tom, you reach out to Jefferson Hills, I'll do that to Duquesne, and.
The way Wilkinsburg has already done it, I think, they actually. The D W two is just. Put it on the ballot.
Yeah, they said no, and then, yeah, yeah, if we get to understand like why they pursued it. That's what I was doing as well, like Duquesne's passed, so I was like, what's their, you know, reasoning for those is. And using Maxx, well, Tuesday, I kind of wanted to get that.
That's it, that's the drop. In one point, I had this idea that council maybe wanted to have a, a home rule, um, commission, like committee or whatever it is, a couple of us could even talk about what things need to get done to get it up and rolling, but. I guess at this point, we're getting the investigation done, because.
But I'm sure we.
Talked about it here, and then, then if we decide to move forward, we're, we, we do a lot of that with the, with the commission when it's born.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we, we get the next step to move, okay, start taking more time, so on a new business, snap was.
All right. Agenda, we do have a couple items to go over, two conditional use hearings for the same property, the same applicant, ones for solar panels and one for yard, the other one was for. accessory structure, recommended for approval by planning commission, or Tim, or.
I was like, there was a neighbor that's really against.
There was a definite opposition, I read, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the, if you can come around here, but like.
You don't want to look at it.
Uh, yes, that's.
You're not sure all the way here.
Right, right around the first.
It's right there.
It was like the third highest sign.
I thought so, because he referenced that stuff first, I figured.
Yeah, before you go, before you even begin.
Stetterford owns the first two houses, your corner or in the second. Next one, he lived in the second one, the first one, I think he rented it out, and he looked at swimming pool, the third one, we're mad.
This is the whole, that's the essential character, neighborhood type thing goes outward, the vision would be.
Yeah, I mean, they meet the code.
Planning, seeing how many issues.
Right.
I'm confused, I thought he was, is he not being solar panels on top of the building?
He's doing right, he's fixing his existing chat.
Okay, these are separate projects, I feel like we talked about last time, he was putting the shed and they're gonna.
I think that was mentioned.
Okay. And then, and here somewhere it said he gave a, put a different application in, which he did, but for different, but I got you now.
Is it, and it's okay, him from the, to fix the existing shed out of.
Well, what he, what he's doing is he's building big sheds. And we're gonna be replacing this garage sometime, but that's already there, so he's not gonna, it's not gonna change in the range country.
And is it an additional accessory structure then?
It, it is, but you can have more, you can't have two of the same types of structure.
Oh, not a basement and attic.
I, I talked to him last week, I had him, I didn't think anyone would have that, and he said he's most likely done to put the solar panels on the roof with him, if he's going, he's opposed on the ground.
Yeah, and honestly, where he's gonna, where he's gonna put the solar panels, it's gonna be so far behind his house, no one's gonna see that.
Near the complaining, he's next one down, but that wasn't that.
Look into it, it's on the curb and then.
That is, there is window, because of the placement of, that would be definitely, like the placement of a house, that is, he feels like he will be constantly looking at it, like, it's morning coffee or something. But technically, there's a, we do, right here, as you know, like this. Aesthetics. There's trees.
And these hundreds of feet from more.
These are incredibly far from, yeah, under the.
And that's pretty.
That's exactly what.
Yeah, he was claiming that it's gonna be in his, in his front yard and his lot, his front yard is not where his, where his. And then he told me he had two people, so.
Yeah, he said both, that it was on his property line on the side, but also in front, I couldn't understand how it was, but.
Here's the drawing in the packet, I think it's ninety feet from the back property line and ninety feet from the sideline.
Yeah, and they talked about planning.
Yeah, so it's almost, it's almost three feet from this.
In terms of, I don't think we've ever had, you know, two applications on the same property, otherwise, my intention is to combine the two, read the exhibits, kind of to cover both. You know, not sort of have one hearing on one, do all everything, so where people in, or the house, close that record, or either vote or continue on to the next one, so. We want us to be a little flexible, as we usually are in terms of conducting it, to make sure that we get both topics addressed on the record at the same time. Or opening quotes. So that one, moving on, motion six, we can discuss a little bit more, speaking of two plus A plus B. So this is the Letera Holdings, Craig Schweiger, proposed assignment and assumption of. The Cardinal Ridge Plan back there, Alden, twenty six townhomes, et cetera, et cetera. We had adventure over the last month or so, trying to figure out exactly what he wanted and needed. He came forward initially and just said, I, I want to sign the development agreement and those responsibilities from our Red Rocks or wherever the. I was been out there before, from those developers, you know, two lots, I said, okay, but they never signed a development agreement, you know, they got their approval. There's a requirement that they sign one within six months, or else you ask for extension, otherwise they essentially get reapproved. So he said, we can assign you sort of the. Vote that they got previously, but, you know, you can't start moving dirt or anything with a lot of those lines until we figure out. You know, at least to the council and how to proceed with a reapproval, because he has had other ideas about maybe changes and going back to the planning commission, et cetera, et cetera. So he was up against closing deadline, I think of last month or so, so he put together the assignment and assumption agreement here. Because he wanted to get RRG's signature at closing, because he didn't really chasing them, there's apparently. Some attention between them, so we drafted it, put it together, let them all know that, you know, council's not gonna see this until a work session tonight, and it will be on the agenda. On the twentieth, so like if you sign it in advance, okay, that's one step out of the way. They have no changes, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, just recites some of the history here, who Letera is, that, you know, and we did get. A letter, that was the other thing, we didn't have anything from RRG as to, was this true? We got a copy of the agreement of sale, we got a copy of a, a letter, a copy, an original letter from RRG saying, yes, we intend to. Assign this to Letera, and they will assume it, that mentioned again, the development agreement. I'll go back with that. The other issue we had is the development agreement, we drafted it, and a year or so ago, was based on those construction cost estimates. But need to be updated as well, we had, you know, outstanding escrow, or review fees and things that nature. But Letera through Craig submitted a check to, you know, bring it back up and go the additional amount, so we are holding funds. You know, for this process of drafting the assignment assumption agreement and others. So we have motion six on the agenda, you know, to do that right now. The question we had, and we've done it before, if somebody's missed the deadline or it does not record within ninety days of a signature, we've done a reapproval. Motion, and it sounded like we were holding off with Craig, because, you know, he was maybe gonna be doing changes, that it makes sense for him to do that through the planning commission and then come through, and then we don't, we can sort of reapprove anything. He was chomping at the bit at one point to, to do paving before they, you know, plans close and our ordinance says they're done. Halloween or something, or so, but it seems like that's kind of gone away. So, and he knows, we would give him a copy of the, the garage door ordinance as enacted, so he has that, and we let him know about the. Consideration, public hearing, December for the height, potential change to the ordinance.
Motion six, except everything's pretty much.
Motion six only addresses like Craig standing in the shoes, the next step is, do we, you know, reapprove Cardinal Ridge. As originally approved, and that same dates are March fifteen, twenty twenty three, you know, recognizing he would need to do a, a new structure cost estimate, and he gave us one. But we haven't done anything with it, I think it actually went down, I think the inflation in twenty twenty three was one, might have been higher, it's come down. Since then, I haven't, we haven't done anything to review or check that he, you know, covered everything, or is this is not changed.
I, I, I don't know what he's doing, he keeps changing this one, so.
And he had had multiple meetings with Tim, and then he sends me emails of, let me summarize my meeting with Tim, but it's not exactly what the meeting was, so we. Placated him, okay, here's the form, assignment assumption agreement, if that's the only thing you'll need from former owner, get it signed at the closing. Closing did happen, we did get a signed version of this agreement, this one signature. By the party that's no longer gonna be involved, I don't know if they recorded the deed or otherwise, so. It'd be sort of the next step, so if we are comfortable with, you know, a reapproval motion, we can do that. And it sounds like, although he was talking about going back to planning commission and maybe changing some things or otherwise.
Last week, he was giving revisions to his planning permission meeting. He was doing it after the deadline, and he had submitted an application, he hasn't submitted any fees since then, no. So he's smelling it, there's something he given me, it's in complete confession.
Red, and Red Rocks is now.
I guess, yeah, I guess.
He's paid their escrow, they figured it out, it was only a thousand bucks or something, for their closing. So we're holding an escrow now, we have a, a, a plan approval that has expired and needs to be reapproved, but if he's gonna. We have a a a plan approval that has expired and needs to be reapproved, but if he's gonna actually submit. They had to see it on for. December's planning commission.
Uh yeah, I I got bits and pieces of stuff and I told him this isn't good enough.
And he didn't ask anything more about paving or moving dirt already or recording.
Well, he's been asking about that, you know, because. And then he doesn't know what, he tells me he doesn't have any stormwater changes than he done. He does. Doesn't. I don't know what he's doing. So I guess we can just, this is something official will go by that.
I guess that's all you can do.
And that's all we do. I know that he he wants to pay, he wanted to pay less than.
Yeah, and so I'm not comfortable.
Even on the property yet.
Yeah, right. Either signing the development agreement that we gave to him back in in twenty twenty-three, but the update is because that time period is gone, you know, it doesn't require an official action from council. Um but if he comes through with a revision and goes through planning commission, we that. Yeah, once it gets in front of council can be the blessing for the development agreement and and everything else. Just so we're not doing one now and then we have to change it, revise it because of. We can sign that the, if this is approved, give him a copy of the assignment assumption agreement, but no, we're not signing development agreement. They're on.
More about that.
Well, like I said, we have the tables that we amended with the attic and the garage door with the mark. Does that have to go back to committee permission?
Yes, I we've sent it on uh to them. Once it was introduced uh and sent it back to uh Allegheny County Economic Development as well. And packet is their response letter. I think there were a few. I went back and forth to the guy to explain to him that, oh, we. We struck this, the last one, we've sent you the garage door one. And this sort of update letter, you know, roughly, well, the garage door has been removed from this. So yes, planning commission, is it on your November window? All right, other things going on, we do have some uh bond releases, things are finishing up. As as council, we've been more active in pursuing developers so that we don't have these ones that go in for twenty years. Um so yes, uh Willa Ridge is done, uh Old Orchard, uh Orchard Hill Church. Wetgo done, et cetera, et cetera. Uh the other development site on Deerfield Estates, Phase Two A. Got two components, one a bond reduction and then two, you know, although their development agreement. You know, and they said, and they gave us a cash bond for four hundred thousand dollars to hold while they did Phase Two A of nineteen lots there. They've come back now and say, oh, we wanna put a performance bond up in place of that. So. As an addendum to the agreement, our addendums usually extend that time period for an additional year or anything else, but we've done them before and made changes. To the development agreement, this one uh will change it to a a subdivision bond, to a cash bond. And it. Isn't that addendum is not specific on the amount, just says as released and otherwise addressed. So the other one got squared away. Did you get a revised? Isn't there a question with the first one they gave? Is that one of the other ones that didn't match up exactly with the.
There was a revision letter um from October thirty-first to November first and the October thirty-first.
That's.
And I just, I sent that to them. Today, so we can. It's like a four, it's less than five dollars.
That's motions ten run.
Yeah.
They have to combine us with the money.
Yep.
Bond before we have to check.
Yeah.
I asked him to get us everything on eighteen, both to get signed agreement and the bond, so.
That's it. Yes. That's good.
Uh he put it in. Now, trying to see if.
Oh, uh I, yeah, I mean, most of those development items were addressed in my uh report as well as copies of them as well. You might have to jump down. In the packet. Together. Oh, the, and the good news on the uh Y M C A. Uh yeah, the bank did continue to insist on. Having this finalized and recorded, but accepted all of our changes that that made it more than not. Or otherwise, as well as acknowledging they have certain responsibilities. So. The one that was coming close to. Uh uh closing day, uh Reg was able to sign as authorized by council, was in a form acceptable to us. And it has been recorded, we're just waiting. Up and back. Yeah. Y M C A got their money.
I um submitted a report, yes. I didn't really have any vision to that um.
It looks pretty.
Um so the zoning board has an application for a front yard setback onto the lane. When they know these lots are, if they live in a little too small, or they depended on building. And then. The uh. Planning Commission. Uh has a home occupation. On some own, for all business, we handle that their next meeting and also the rooms. And then the the house that we had one, what's the Ben Rose? I would say is, let's say, six year.
Okay. Yeah. The Taylor Lane House is kind of across from him. It just built.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So it's one, one in the back, back, yeah, yeah.
The one thing you sort of call this that, but not.
Well, it's a, it's a. Not a formal call site, but it's, it needs to be improved.
It's a circle on the red, yeah.
So probably then it has to be done.
Gotcha.
But the width of the department call site on Fifth Street.
And they want. The house will keep being this. In the street.
Or from the right away, actually.
Gotcha.
To the right away.
Is there another lot back there? They're gonna develop it? On that.
There's a time we stacked three of these then, right?
Yeah, so the original house is on the street and then. A lot and a lot.
And that's the part of this back one that they know now.
He wanted that. They 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 originally applied for some, that subdivision, then it expired or something. Didn't they reapply? Didn't they renew it or something on that?
It might have, and may may have needed to be reapproved like most subdivisions do because nobody's writing ones there.
Went past a year and we had to, we had to stand for the second time.
We had to stand there.
Well, a lot's been cleared for quite a while.
Well, I mean, it's built, some developments built, it's just. Now use the houses, there's one house back there, so, so.
Uh you have my report. The only other thing that I was asked to bring up is. Um part of hunting and whether we want to. Provide a list of hunters or. Assign hunters to private property within birth. I've been asked in the past week by two property owners. Um about hunting their property. Um now that we control the. Here management program. One property is. Very small um.
It's long and narrow and, I mean. You have to have a hunter that's. Shooting at the house.
Yeah.
Or deer that is right.
Yeah, it's shooting down a hallway, is what I like to call it.
Second, I talked about that. I have concerns about assigning a hunter to a property. I'd rather check with our hunters and see if they're willing to. On private property as well and then provide that list to a private property owner. Make a reach out. Cause that way the hunter can walk on the property and say, oh, no way this has been working. They walk off.
That's the way to do it. Make sure that the private property owner consults with the hunter.
It's between the private property and it's not.
And they take the hunters off the list. It's not one and. And it's between them, not not us, so.
It's just a matter of whether our hunters will agree to. Have a share there, which I would guess they probably would if they hear there's a.
The one property for sure. The one property is multiple acres.
Yeah, they're they're easy picking somewhere. It's gonna be hungry every day there. I definitely jump on.
I know I've got neighbors who combine. Interests to have the hunters, well, I mean, to have to have the deer called, you know, if you got three or four properties that have a three. And that's honestly the only way you're going to get it in almost all these neighborhoods, like the one person that reached out has. Six acres, which is more than enough. It acts to a hillside. It's actually. An ideal location um and it's actually. Pretty close to my property and they're already hunting deer. That moves through um and that's. We have a big herd that moves between the church right here basically. And the orchard. Over off uh Ingamar Heights. The old uh baby orchard. So there's a. At least. Twelve to sixteen. In that group, then pretty much all move together. Um and a couple of big bucks too, so. It's uh, yeah, we, I've multiple accidents with the earth.
Yes, it seems like there are three in the road just drove up.
Uh yes, it is. Uh we're getting in the rut. So yes, they're uh not thinking before cross. Other things on their mind. So yes, be careful out there.
The red, not how many under. We have, why not on your basement?
On our list is twelve. For our parks. And we're pretty much getting hunting. Four to five days of out of seven. Where we have somebody in in the parks. Mostly Lindbrook, um some of the McGee property. Uh but yeah, I mean, it's. For better or worse, obviously, the golf course needs. Help, but it's also the weather's been so ideal that. We're. We're open for business. We're not, we can't hunt the property when we're open for business, you know, it's the good and the bad part of uh. The weather is we're good for golf and when it's good for golf, it's not good to send hunters to the golf.
And we can find it somehow.
I'm sending the place to you though.
So how you fishing? How many deer that have like? How many deer that have like?
Have we taken so much here? We're at seven right now. Which is above last year's pace. Now, to be fair. We're mostly in Lindbrook. Um so it's a lot more brown, yeah, but then without. And without a correct and.
You guys have seen more than seven in my backyard. If you have.
And that's why they're there, honestly, it is. A hun- unhuntable area. In these suburban neighborhoods. Um and like you said, you can combine. But you better find five or six neighbors who all agree.
Yeah.
And that, you know, one person in that cluster will shut you down. Um then you'll probably have neighbor two doors up and won't. It's your choice as a property owner if you wanna have it looked at. So, all right, I can put a list together and. Have them reach out personally to the. Uh hunters.
Beginning it, the hunter would get those approvals from not only the one homeowner, but the relation.
Correct.
Or would you, would the one homeowner have to go contact all the neighbors?
It should be the homeowners who is contacting the neighbors um. The one we're talking about that has a long but narrow, he. Has said that the um. Previous management company. Was on his property before.
Okay.
But again, it's like one tree. That they can set up in. And pretty narrow window. Uh where they can, and it's. Topography wise. It's flat, which. Good, but bad, because obviously we have to be even more careful. Um is fifty yards, especially when. Almost everybody now shoots crossbow. Fifty yards can get covered very quickly in the crossbow. Um we don't see, you know, nobody uses longbows, very few. Use top, use compounds even. The young man's team using compound, that is.
All right, thanks.
Um just a couple of updates from our our written memo. So A Port Park. Contract work is still progressing there. Drive by, you'll see the framework basically is parking lot, parking curves are in. Um contractors about to start and continue through with um pervial favors for parking areas. Paving will follow, so that's moving along okay. Um utility coordination has improved. Um since the report last month, so. Um you can light it south to south, they've been out on site. Service should be there by the end of the month. We've had some good back and forth over the last week or so with Westview as well. Um and it should be on board whenever uh independent is ready. So. Job drawing approved, materials through Westview and and um that's going better. So fingers crossed utility. Coordination will continue. feudal design tweaks with um staff here just to make sure the playground and classroom and all that's gonna fit. So. Um all that's going well and um independent will be out there and plugging along the.
I have a right and love around a junior show, you know, is the um. I forwarded everyone today, the um. Big tab for the. Fire alarm improvements. Um right now in the budget that council reviewed, we've got two hundred thousand dollars in there for the fire alarm improvements. You recall, we have a budget of. Substantially less than that this year, and when they committed over a hundred thousand dollars, we decided to rebid. Uh with the rebid, the prices have gone up. Um justice background um. And I think Andy, you can explain it better than I can, but fire alarm panel. Tends to go off on a regular basis um.
It goes into trouble there. Uh and what happens is it usually happens around a power failure or a power clicker. And what happens is it wants to switches to battery power. The processor on the main board. If they're longer detect the AC being restored. So the only way to do it is the manually plug the batteries, manually unplug the power. Let the system drain and then charge. Plug it back in, restart it, then cancel all the air kills you get, because you get fired the system up. Um the other thing is that all the detectors and everything are. A completely different era with modern panels and so on and so forth. So they only replace them well. So it's it's functioning. It's not right. And occasionally we'll get a situation where there's a little lurking beep again, just drives our tax collector crazy and we start charging.
I say that because uh based on our earlier discussion, that's. The biggest ticket item that we could kick down the road potentially to try to balance next year. It functions, it's in the noise. More for the taxpayer.
And it's not, it's not dead, it's still doing its job.
We did not get it inspected this year. That's another thing where the police need an inspection certificate that it works for their accreditation.
So we we would need to get it inspected.
Need to get it inspected this year. We chose not to get it inspected because we're trying not to get it replaced.
We did inspect it. I, it it would likely pass, but it. At some point, it's gotta.
How much did an inspection cost?
Probably. It's like the fire department. If it's, if it's two hundred dollars, you're probably.
Yes, not a lot.
I like kicking that one down.
Same, I mean, that's, that's the lowest hanging fruit we have.
He's a candidate during a.
If the power fails on Friday evening. Somebody has to come up and reset it manually. Where the batteries will go dead and you won't have fire protection. By the time, so by the time somebody comes around.
Maybe, um where, why are we having power failures? Is there something that we know about?
This is the alarm, the squirrel runs up the telephone pole.
So it's just where the wires are, cause we have our wires out in the open that they're they're subject to getting.
And we're not having power failures, we'll be able to internal intercept.
Andy, is it possible to put a UPS on the pop incoming power to the main panel? A portable, a couple hundred dollars.
We could look at doing that, we'd have to have uh. Bruce rewire it because of the hardwires not plugged in. So we have to easily rewire it. What would you look at with that?
I mean, that might be a couple hundred, a thousand dollar UPS, but.
Now we're buying smaller.
Yeah, buying over to the.
Anything like that would be possible. But I think before we get into that, that's the best, that's how to make sure it's gonna.
Probably what I would give it a shot, try try something, you can hook up for a year or two and it just. Chances of it going completely dead, if it was forty eight hours or something, then home.
It's not calling the fire department every time it does weirdness, right? It's just going air.
No, it just goes into the air alert and starts beating inside the building. Because it thinks hours still around, that's really hard.
As far as engineering, we've, I mean, we've got the bid specs prepared and it's still be good a year from now if we decide on the road again.
Yeah, in fact, what we did this time, we just put a new date on the stuff we were preparing, February, March, whatever. We're doing another request group, yeah.
So we we can kick that came down.
Yeah.
I'll I'll start with schedule for the test.
So put a motion on that.
Those were uh the two big updates for the original A Port Park.
You guys have, excuse me, you guys have the chief reporter on the main thing to do that. Why I have nothing to add?
Just when you think you're out with Tim.
Yeah, it's nature of the job.
Uh sounds good, so uh on to board commission.
The list was in the packet. Um the letters went out November first to those who are up for reappointment, I have heard from some. Already responses were due next Friday, or sorry. Their responses are due by Monday, the eighteenth. Um we also put the notices out, you know, that we're looking for possible new board members, those are due by next Friday. Um so I will get back to you the night of the twentieth to let you know um. Who all wants to be reappointed and any applications that we have. Um normally, we don't have too many, um we schedule them at the beginning of the week session in December. Um we've always said if you have fifteen interviews, we can do it the second Wednesday, but we haven't had to do that. Um I know, like I mentioned, um. We've had a few people submit applications, but when I tell them they have to do the background check and then. State your financial interest, I usually don't hear that. Yeah. Um we have one scholarship candidate. Who I had reached out to, um all of her paperwork is in, she indicated she is not available for the work session. Some surgery, so my question is. Because these appointments take place in December this year, because there's no reorganization meeting, no new council members. Would you, would it be okay to schedule her for the pre-meeting on November twentieth? On the chance that we don't have enough to schedule that second Wednesday, we don't want to go in for just one interview.
Uh any objections to that?
Usually those interviews are five minutes, to be honest with you, so if we put her in, she's available seven o'clock.
Uh yeah, that's that's available.
Um and then the other candidate was a planning commission and he did not submit the additional forms, so reached out. So I'll have an update. Stuff will be updated in the packet on the fifteenth.
Just to add a little bit to what Sean said, and correct me if I'm wrong, to um contract is done. Playground, we expect to have a stop late late November, early December.
Like, yeah, we're looking like the eighteenth, week of the eighteenth to start on the playground.
Yeah, the um other classroom is probably gonna be January, February installation. Uh the bridges, we're probably looking at January at this point, as I understand it.
Yes, we've been back and forth with their supplier, um with some bills, I would say in January is probably the best.
That's an important one, because I let the county know GEDTF grant that we're using that to pay for the bridges. So we did not request an extension on that grant and the grant expires in. I think February twenty sixth or something like that, so we need to make sure the bridges are in.
The contractor actually requested an expedited um design package from their supplier. So they're away aware of the, they're a magic wand, but they're aware of the time sensitivity there for that specifically.
The um. See, the each, the ADA trail is. Just about in, it's rolling, stone is only, they haven't paid to get, I guess we're having.
They haven't paid yet, they're working on some bit of stone and um they're gonna readjust that area by the. Um outdoor classrooms for the.
The um. Restrooms, uh we're probably looking at February, March, or possibly even April for that to be installed, it's. There's a pretty lengthy window from when we placed the order, we haven't placed the order yet, I don't know if they. Very good back to us yet.
We try him again as soon as he responded to us.
And. We we may be looking for another supplier.
Yes, because of weed time there, it'd take a lot of gas, I mean, it's a quick install when they get here.
And um the uh restoration work in the trails, our people will be doing and that'll take place over the course of uh. Late winter and spring, so that hopefully we have everything in place and in full by like June. Have the park open before then, but everything.
Did you say earlier that the parking stones are part of the one?
Yes.
So the, yeah, the the parking stalls themselves are perfect repairs, and the drive in was just greater pay.
Yeah, if you happen to stop by and see it. Don't don't go on a weekday because there's a lot of people working there, during the weekend, you can actually walk down in and take a look, it's coming up really.
Yeah, pavers are in for this. So they all have like. Spaces in between the pavers where you can bow or.
Uh potential LSA grant applications, um open to any suggestions anyone has, uh the deadline is November thirtieth. Um. I'm gonna look again at planned purchases that we're going to make to see if any of those qualify for LSA grant. Uh but I'm not looking at any new projects that. Um we might apply for, we talked about the out of pocket costs associated with that as well. Uh we have three LSA grants right now that have been approved, one is the half million dollars for Public Work Garage Edition. Um that expires uh in June of twenty twenty six, so we're probably gonna have to look at. Really ramping up quickly early in twenty twenty six to get that work done. And that project was estimated two million dollars a couple of years ago, so that. Maybe more, I don't know if we can get additional LSA money for that or not. I don't know if you've had experience with that, Sean, but.
You can ask, um we just wouldn't know if you submit now, you won't know until. You know, this time or later, next.
But that that project's gonna have to move forward anyway, so the hope is we can find some other funding for it. That's the kind of project I'm looking at for applying for funding that we've already committed to it. Um and uh we just need some additional money now, thank you.
I'd say it wouldn't hurt to submit again, unless you have other steps gonna take priority that would repeat with it. Um.
Alright, uh. Management report discussion items, um LA County Beckin Property Recovery Program. Basically, all we do is pass a resolution and sign the agreement saying we're gonna join this program. Everything then falls on the county and the applicant, the county determines whether it's a blighted property or not, the applicant has to be able to prove that they can. Uh bring that property back in compliance within a s- specific period of time. Very detailed plans for how that's gonna be done, uh we do have the one gentleman who's asking about the property on. And uh I I don't know if he's been inside it yet, but look at it. And I don't know if he understands fully what he's asking for, he asked us to enter this program, which takes a lot of sense for us to do anyway. And I think the county will find it to be a blighted property. But uh for him to come up with this detailed plan by dates and who's gonna do the work and how much it's gonna cost and all that. I mean, he's gonna be up against it there, so I don't know if that's gonna get anywhere or not, and all we can do is. Go ahead and join the party and you'll see where it goes.
Would you call it salvageable, Tim?
Well, yeah, I mean, anything can be fixed, it's just. Money you gotta throw at, honestly, they're they're done. So the lots paying up, you get something that doesn't go too much. But I think there's a lot of baggage on that.
And and what happens is actually the the county ends up purchasing the property and then selling it to the applicant.
There's a detailed agreement on obligations of the applicant and where they have to give them what they have to do.
Yeah, there's a lot on the applicant, so not much on us at all. We'll go ahead and get a resolution on the agenda for.
Sometimes the applicant will go to one of those nonprofits that are set up to re- redevelop unblighted properties and do a deal with them to get them. Cause they're experts on calling back.
There are, there are a couple items I emailed the council that uh I discussed, one of them, there are actually three, but one of them we already covered, that was the tire alarm. Um we did get a quote from the bank uh for the property purchase that we've been discussing, the. Sellers are agreeable to the terms in the agreement, so. Agreement of sale that Max's office put together, I told you to them, and they're fine, they're willing to go forward with it, I. Think we just sent put something to the agenda in two weeks when we. Or have we already done it by saying we're authorized to enter an agreement?
Well, I mean, we could talk in under executive session as well, but um. At least on the financing, I don't know, two, you know, going around, you know, the bank and the note, like one thing to consider. Uh we've used bond counsel Ron Brown for both the uh. Two refinancing, those are like eight million dollar projects. Now, this is not a small borrowing, it's like a hundred and twenty five thousand or so, so there's still a requirement to get D C E D. Sign off on the currents of the debt under the local government, you know, debt act. And there's an opinion letter that these, you know, notes are tax exempt for the things that bond counselor does. I haven't talked to Ron, anyways, we're talking about, I mean, he does flat fee arrangement based on the size of the the issuance. Talk to him, let's get him a quote um to do that, just because looking at the proposal, they had those steps, at least in terms of the opinion and everything else. Didn't address the D C E D filings.
So we have financing is potentially in place, we just need to talk more executive session about the actual trans. Um and uh I also sent along the council the bid recommendation for the Montgomery Road Stormwater Project. Um we do have a CDBG grant for that for two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh that is actually running through the cog, but we would have to go ahead and award. Um. We had budgeted uh four hundred and fifty thousand for this project and it's coming in at two ninety nine, so that's always nice to see. And the the budget that we discussed tonight already hasn't reduced to two ninety nine. Um but I just wanted to make sure council is aware that uh this project is moving forward and. Hopefully, the county doesn't drag its feet because the uh the grant does expire in June of next year. Um shouldn't be a problem getting this done, this this aspect of it with the uh contractors mainly uh. enlarging pipe along the road and uh do some headspace repair. And uh just uh increasing the size slightly, we have a a formidable stormwater detention facility on some of this property.
We're putting a motion on to award that one.
Yes.
Uh sounds good, uh supports.
Max, last, um yesterday I found out that there was a newsletter being circulated. Uh about certain work that was being done by council in particular, um we heard about. The proposed ordinance for the tree preservation. And what it alleged was that there were four lawsuits filed against the borough. Based upon that ordinance that was tabled by unanimous motion. So I'm asking you as solicitor, are you aware of any such lawsuits? Yeah, and I will tell you as a lawyer, I checked both federal DCF and court, the Department of Court Records found no lawsuits, so.
Um I can only speculate, it was those petitions that.
Okay, they were misnamed.
Yeah, attempted to be a lawsuit.
So nothing has escaped your attention and it's nothing on the docket, nobody's. Alright, so that's that, I wanted to make certain that I that I was, you know, understanding completely. I think we have an obligation to our residents to let them know what's going on and, you know, so. And I had talked to Tom and Luke and they were, they were gonna look into it as well too, because we. Want to make sure all the information that residents are getting and what. Especially in a case like this where we all worked pretty hard on on this before it got tabled.
Is that newsletter like?
It was the Republican newsletter, yeah, so, but it was being circulated to, you know, the residents.
And uh you wanna take a look?
I don't know, I mean. But it was, it was labeled as a newsletter, you know. Yeah. But as a solicitor, you can confirm for us, no such lawsuits or.
What's on the second page, so I'll see.
On the back. Thanks, alright, I think we gotta clear it up. Alright, another question for Tim too. Hey, uh Tim, I've got a resident question, uh I'll just say the road tremble. Uh they're talking about fences, can you kind of give me some background on this so we can get what's going on? Apparently, there was one particular application. Yeah, I know, one application that was filed, um apparently, um and whatever the house bill was, was different from the final, and there's an issue with a. Right away or something.
Yeah, so when we issued a permit for a front yard fence, um. It was it was shown in the proper location, we issued a permit based on that, we got out there, it was. Several feet closer to the road than that, it was. It were right away off off site, off property.
Right.
So it let them know that we couldn't, they called for file inspection, we let them know that this is a violation, and they, you know, they can't have it there.
Is it NOB, so are they gonna ask for a variance, is that what?
No, we did a uh inspection on the first one, so so the first one we issued the permit on was just inspection.
Right.
They're struggling with having to relocate that. When we were out there. It was obvious that there was another fence and just the door to a, and it was in the same position, actually maybe even a little worse than that. Um so we did send a notice of violation there, because we, after we researched, filed, realized that there was no permit issued for that, um they have been there for several years. Um but, you know, the complaint is, you know, what it actually is.
I get that.
There's no grandfathering, it doesn't.
There's no la- Max, there wouldn't be a latch, he's the fence's been there a bunch of times. My understanding is the uh in the property um file for the street file for that one, where there's an NOB. There were a bunch of applications that were filed and then inspections were done by by you, Tim, so that. That they're they're saying to me, Tim was on the property multiple times and walked by the fence and never mentioned it at all.
Well, I don't know, I don't know where the right of way is, but since we know where the right of way is from the. The the permit that we issued, um you know, I usually don't.
The the permit that we issued, um, you know, I usually don't go back every inspection I go to and make sure that everything's okay in the property. Unless I see something, it's obvious, but some of these roads are are narrow right of ways, they they arrange anywhere to. To purchase, which is the original width of the road, which is thirty three feet. To fifty feet, so I wasn't, I I was unaware of the width of. Tremble, so.
So they'll file and have a variance then?
Well, they can have a variance, but you know, I don't see how there's any hearing work and. Granted, because how can you do, fences aren't in their property.
It's just the phone call I received today looking for all of them.
The 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 N O V was actually written for the fact that the fence was constructed without a permit. For instance.
And that, that's like normal procedure, I got, I've got a fence for twenty years and I could get an N O V saying whoever had the house, the board never filed a permit, so I'm, I'm stuck on the hook for it. Not a title insurance issue?
Eventually, but.
Yeah.
Not one we get too involved in.
No, I'm just kind of.
Non-conforming structure issues, if somebody's looking for the old Sony.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe it. I don't think they're gonna find anything, so we can have it integrated for it.
Mine even helps. Or hurts.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's, it's just unfortunate that. You know, this all happened, neither property, I'm happy with it, I understand that, you know, I mean, if I could figure out a way to make it work for them, I would. Just like the ready. Random plan, that would be fine. Will do a line revision, I don't know. Um, plus they're under the campus contractor center authority. Reason, so that's a whole other issue. But not with us, but with.
First property that actually recently was. Stole the fence, actually put a gate in right over top of the manhole, so then the gate. But that means that they knew it was there.
This is a.
Didn't show up on the, on the survey?
This was a contractor that put this in, right, they gave you a nice design that was fine, was.
Well, the, the applicant, I I believe it was the applicant or the, the. Tenant that made the application, I guess, and um. She rents off her parents, that's her parents' property. And um, you know, since she's the applicant. She's a contractor. So, and she showed us that it was in, in a, in a perfectly good place to be. On, on her application and in, in on her site plan. What foiled her was her survey was very specific. So. And then she, she. Said that she, there's no way that she would have. Done that, and she saw that. She agreed, yeah, I guess I would do that. So it was pretty obvious that one.
Take it off, take, take the fence and that.
Well, or relocate it, I mean, they, she can put it anywhere on her property, she just can't have it off of her, why can't she issue a permit for a fence on somebody else's property?
Is it just the one side or?
Just the front and and whatever leads into that from the sides. You know, it's, it's unfortunately. She built a house on somebody else's property. We live in it. What's that?
The front line of her fence is on somewhere else's property?
Yeah, it's, it's in the road right way. Gotcha, so. The borough wants to grant her right to do that. For the information. She's also gonna have to deal with the M T S A, because it's on M T S A.
And then that fence isn't out right there.
And then the neighbor that's got the. The, the actual notice of violation, that's really good, so that's also on, is that, is that like lined up with the other fences?
I think it's, I think it's closer to the road, actually, it's in approach of north.
And it's still M T S As.
I don't know if that's, if that's on the, there, I haven't seen her share them.
Thanks, Tim, it's been wonderful.
So, James is.
Bye, Bill.
No.
Oh, I was just looking at this email about the water drainage on Norman Drive again. I thought you had responded to a couple emails. Which is good, okay, I mean, I don't. Six points.
Yeah, my one was actually that I thought this week, and uh. If there's, if you look at it, uh, if there are actually weeds. Reiterate. The response. Uh. You know, they're, they're lucky, happy leaving them. Um, but what's not wrong, the borough stands to not change, is.
I mean, I think that's what that part of the road is designed for, right, to carry water and other stuff.
That's sort of gutter. Is that what it's called?
Gutter lawn, yeah.
Gutter lawn. It is actually intended, uh, now. I can't help that there are grass going through the leaves. I, I have no idea if that's what's happening.
Yeah, yeah, well, I appreciate you going out to look and disturbing things.
I, I think, I think that we may need to consider blocking water before we pass our property.
Right. They wouldn't have any rights.
Certainly can't obstruct anything.
Yeah, which I, I understand their concerns, but again, we, we said that we would deal with this, we would. Put salt down on the roads, even if there wasn't precipitation, if the temperature set a place that would be freezing. So I feel like that part of it, we have. Addressed. The aesthetics of it, I don't know. I don't know, there's.
I mean, it's, it's an unfortunate where there's design to carry water. And places to get the water. But, I, I understand, like, they may not want to see it, but uh, it's a spring, so the spring can, one thing I was mentioning was the spring can appear, appear and.
Yeah.
Continue or not continue. Um. But I'll, cause they will get it again, I don't, I can't imagine if the water is increased or. Grasping. Uh, yeah. We're not sure what's happening, but um. I mean, leaves are being bad. And and whatnot, so, leaves are, I mean. I'll follow.
Thank you, again. I'm good.
Yeah, to follow up with the, 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 nor is that the. Uh. I actually, yeah, because I live there and I go and drive past that place and. I, I can tell sometimes they, um, they strain or the water will go, you know, will increase from that decrease and. So, it is hard to tell, and uh. And I think I did, and I talked to the. Uh, neighbors and uh. This kind of problem has been there. For a couple of years, and in the backyard, because they first they didn't know that what's going on, and then. Finally, and they've become so worse, and so that's why. They reach out to you there and go over and, you know, and the, then we saw something. So. So that's why they. Somehow they don't believe that the water was stopped anytime. In the near future, I think, you know, in a couple of years. So that's why they're concerned about it. You know, the customer workflow and. They know that they, you know. The road or something, you know, so. We're seeing negative, you know, if the borough has decided, you know, do not do anything. I just tell them like this, this is the. Uh, even I don't agree, but the majority has, you know. Reached that agreement, I'm okay with that, you're the total night today, I'm, I'm. I'm totally against that today. This kind of equipment, and so, but, and the. This is something like, how we want to business, so, so. So, whatever, you know, and, so I'm, I'm not so sure, and uh. Uh, how open they are, you know. Reach out to us or contact us and. Uh, and update, I have the information that what's going on there. Um. But I can tell, actually, I, I totally understand their concern and. I, I, I constantly agree with them, like, you know, it's really annoying and. It's tough, like, um. Some problems and. You know, the, um, Jodos and neighborhood and ocean matter. Uh. And because, like, when you draw very long. You saw it, and even if we know that it's a leak, so you're something like. You know, in the water, but it looks so bad. So I can tell you. So. Uh, but I'm fine with that, you know, whatever, you know, you guys are putting, so I echo them like this. I need to. I was not too, you know, present. And that's the. The stuff that is true that is hopeful, and the hopeful is just. At least one helping thing. I'm, I'm good with that.
I brought this up the past couple of years, seemed to be. Works this year, um, weeks back, which, so, the main issue, in my opinions, is that we start it and take a week off. And there's two problems with that, number one. That first week they have to be out like a curve. At six AM. Nobody does that, they put them out in my neighborhood. On Tuesday. So that first week. Waste management zips through on Monday. And then there were four leaf bags sitting there for until today. Because they put them out the next day. And we were sporting bags, and that, and that was throughout my neighborhood, there was a lot, and I get complaints and questions, what's going on? Obviously, I tell people, you sign up for the email, let's check the website. If that's only reaching three hundred people. So, number one, I think we need to. Not skip that second. Because it's, I mean, I really doubt, uh, I think that we definitely. Um. I do know that we usually skip the weekend of Thanksgiving. I think that probably makes. Sense because. It's to bring in, I don't know. Hopefully by then. It's like falling as much.
The reason I think we should secondly is because of how many of these kids are alive.
Correct, it's, it's. That's the problem, they're there, so I don't know, I don't know them, I don't know where the solution is, but there was a contract, it was probably a twenty bucks, I love it. He could say not to start, but I, I assume after how many of this.
Well, we're gonna take the blueberry and then we're gonna.
We, which you. It is an option for some people anyway, I mean, some people do.
Yeah, if I have.
Yeah, we encourage people to use the current side.
Yeah, so I don't know, maybe we can think about it, I, I think some kind of tweak. It just hurt this a. I know, it's not really.
It's a poor response, I worry about. She's still, I mean, two houses or three on the.
Uh, not as bad.
Okay.
Um, but throughout the. People just, they put them out with their garbage on Tuesday. If this is, if it's already on twelve, they would pass us. Seven fifty two, right, so I just.
Yeah, we have the same issue, and we don't have sidewalks either, which creates a real issue for the. Is there. I mean, I did like fifteen. To start the second week, kept them at the house, moved them out this week and add them there like twenty five to it, so, yeah, I'm one of these drive-bys right now. Does literally have to. The big bags.
As far as taking that second week off, oh, they, they pick up during the day, right, so, I mean, it doesn't improve that.
Yeah, I think what they're saying, so, so people put them out, but.
Yeah, the bags are out.
Which they's doing, yeah, that's.
People don't put them out, if, if the collection is running behind or whatever.
Maybe we don't have to announce it.
I think the. I think the issue is more of, we are unaware of what day and their color. It's completely random that they did show up to get their bags.
That depends on volume, completely, they have no idea, I think, given they, how much.
Right, that's why we tell people to put them out on Mondays.
Well, and, and there's been years where this second week. They haven't even gotten to my, so, so then you can, I can go in that three weeks, so maybe if we don't stop. Then you don't have as much backup on the second week, and.
Sounds like what we should probably do is just. Keep it up through the entire season. Don't announce it.
Yeah.
President, I want to know.
Yeah.
I know what, um. I wrote to reach on this, I think we're ready to, it was, but. Right now, there's three Franklin Park Borough Facebook pages.
I didn't respond, you.
Yeah, that is fine, there's three of them, yeah, there's one called Franklin Park Borough, there's one called, I think ours is Borough or Franklin Park, and there's one called Franklin Park P A. So there's three of them now. Now, the Facebook, the Facebook algorithm is, is, is completely, um. Um. Twisted over that, because it's, it's, what happens is ours is being like tamped down because of. The way the algorithm works, so we're not getting front views that it would make sense for us to get. But here's what my proposal.
Is that why?
Yeah, here's what my proposal is. That we change it to official Franklin Park Borough. Facebook page, something that makes it look like this is the government Franklin Park Borough. Facebook page, because the other ones look like it. And one of them is just advertising. All day long, all they have is bulletins up of people selling stuff and trying to sell stuff. It looks like Franklin Park Borough is trying to sell stuff on their Facebook page, it looks really hanky. So, we, we need to make some distinction, I'm, I'm proposing it to become the official Franklin Borough.
We'll, we'll have to see if we can make that change with Facebook or if they require us to create a new page.
Yeah, no, I think you, you're allowed to change the name a number of times, as long as it's not too many times, yeah, I, I have experience for that, so I sure you can do that.
I'll get with Donna tomorrow.
Yeah, no, it'd be great, does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I think that's great, the other one that's more like community, people posting stuff and commenting, who runs that? Just some random community member.
Well, I know we've talked to.
Yeah, we.
She removed some pictures.
Yeah, we reached out to her because people were confusing it, and she said that when she started, it was just for her to. Respond with friends, but it took off in there. She's closed it since then, so that, you know, for example, I can't get on and see, uh, if I can be a member, if you want.
We're telling them, I'm a member of all of them, all three of them. There's one called Franklin Park P A. There's one called Borough Franklin, I think Franklin Park Borough, and there's one called Borough Franklin Park, that's crazy.
Franklin Park Borough, we said, we asked them, their picture was.
We need to do something, and that's, if that's the fix, great, official Borough Franklin Park.
Okay. We talked to Donna, see what.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's important to make that distinction.
Yeah, because it looks like Borough is like advertising people's services, yeah, what's that, really weird.
Yeah, stupid Instagram pages. If you're ready to do that.
You could do official for Instagram, so.
It's titled. The petition there. Uh, okay, good. Alright, uh, cool, I don't have anything, so, um. Yeah, to do something. Thanks, everyone.